On the roll, making sure we have five people. So please indicate if you're president. Mr. Delai.
President.
Mr. Shagun.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Bennet.
Here.
And Mr. Janta.
President.
Okay, we have five, so that is four. So. We'll proceed with that. The first topic on our agenda is somebody who wants to withdraw. And I think they just were drawing without prejudice completely, right? So I don't think there's anybody here to talk about that. Would somebody like to make a motion to have them withdraw without prejudice?
I'll make a motion for BP Merrimack LLC, three ten and three twelve Merrimack Street, and three Woodland Street, VAR twenty-four dash nine, and CSP twenty-four dash twenty.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of it? Uh, seeing none, we'll, uh, take a roll. Go around the table. Mr. Delai.
Yes.
Mr. Shagun.
Yes.
Mr. Janta.
Yes.
And Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Okay, that gets us to our only public hearing for this evening. And, um, I guess we'll open the public hearing. And this is a public hearing for special permit. But it's for Mill Street. Oh, here it is up here. Um, on fifty-one Mill Street, a special permit for nonconformities to construct a single-story addition extending the nonconforming rear yards. Um, way we do these hearings is we hear here first from the presenter. Then we hear from anybody else who'd like to speak, either here or online. Then we have any questions from the board members? Then we have deliberations from the board members that we vote. It takes four to five votes. So is somebody here to present this topic? Yeah, so if you could come to the microphone and, uh, introduce yourself, uh, we can get underway.
Hello, my name is Julie. I'm from Old Smithwood Architects, and I'm representing the client. And today, who was the fifty-one Mill Street? I said, you know, it's gonna be a couple minutes. I'll let you know when you can head on over. And so I apologize, but she's not. She's still may make it. Um, I, I think I can follow along pretty well. It's a little bit hard for me to see, but I'm happy to walk you through it. I think, um, if, if we wanted just to go through the slides, but I I think this, this image, uh, really tells it all. It's fifty-one Mill Street is attached. It was originally, um, both sides of the house, so it's now a family. It was split at some time historically. So you'll see that our property is, uh, the what is actually the rear yard is the dividing line between the two halves. And because it's a corner lot and Franklin Street is the longer two five, as you know, and that becomes the front. And so the back property line again is that dividing line between the two halves of the home. And the, this property that setback is twenty-five feet. And so virtually the whole entire, almost the entire house is within the I guess that might be helpful. The existing home, again, um, the, the property we're looking at is the right side if you're looking at the upper photo. And that's the Franklin Street. Nation where and then that's the the front. Personally. Um, these photos are helpful. Um, this is, oh, I have, um, if you, if you want handouts, if you wanna see something close, I can, I can show you, but the right side is the thank you for being in on that. Um, so you'll see we're kind of tucking, we're tucking an addition into next to the L. Um, so the large part of the house is page down, shorter, a little bit shorter, narrower side is that page up. And we're adding a one-story addition in the bend in there. And as I said, the, as far as where the twenty-five foot is from, again, the left side property line is the rear. Twenty-five feet brings us to the outside upper corner of our addition. So again, the existing house entirely is entirely within that rear yard setback. So our addition almost seventy feet has to be there as well, and it, it is making the nonconforming in that in that setback. As far as the other, I think the zoning matrix kind of describes it, but as far as the other constraints, um, setback wise, we aren't making them any worse. Except the front yard setback, we're now, we, we did, we were, we're currently at thirty foot thirty and one-half feet, and we're going to be at twenty-five. And so you know, be per required. Making that, you know, closer to Franklin Street. The front yard setback is existing, nonconforming, no change. I'm sorry, the, the front yard on Mill Street. And, uh, um, the rear setback, we talked about it in the side setback. Changing. So I think, um, this really we're seeking is for rear yard. You wanna, I, I'd be helpful to look at the others. Shows the elevation from Franklin Street and we, we added the heights just so you'd have them. Those were just added today and we uploaded adjusted elevation to to the site. But it's significantly shorter than the and that's, um, the lower drawing shows what you see. Mill Street, this five foot or so addition, pretty far back street. Which we thought was, that was really an important elevation and the whole, the whole addition, the intent be just enough, and it's obviously subsequent to the main. Any questions? I move forward.
We'll take them off at the
Okay, great. So yeah, we wanna, um, I guess the next is the plan. Kitchen shows the addition and the roof line, uh, plan from the second floor. So it's adding, uh, reconfiguring the kitchen to be an entry and, and then this addition become nice. To the dining space. Final is the demolition plan. And that's, that was mostly for historic that showed that non demolition didn't trigger historic review. I think that describes it. And, and, and voted if you wanna wanna ask a question.
Okay, what we do is, once you're done, we see if anybody sometime we have neighbors or somebody that wants to talk to give you a chance.
Okay, great.
And then last
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, um, we'll close the presentation part of the hearing. Now we're up to the comments from anybody in the community who would like to comment. But I don't see anybody else in the room. Do we have anybody else online?
There's one person online, but their hand is not up.
Um, I see a Barbara Kane online. If you would like to comment, you just push the raise my hand button. Uh, and you can, uh, we'll recognize you if you comment. But what's, what's that thing happening? Says you're talking.
It's picking up everyone.
Okay. All right. We'll see no hands being raised online. Or in the room. We will close the public comment period and we will go back then to questions. We can ask our presenter questions. Who from the party like to begin? Yes.
So I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused is when you're looking at the drawings. The little shaded area. It's hard to say for these.
That's one. Oh, and I have, um, I have a large one. It'd be helpful to see it in person.
Then you said this, this home is actually two.
The building. It's two properties.
Yeah, so that is not, not touching the other property or?
No. If you wanted to go back to the site plan or even the
There's a lot of property there in regards to it's two different houses.
Yeah, so what we are seeing in that elevation, so within the yellow is all this property. So when we were looking in that direction, you're seeing the right where the cursor is, that's the back of the L. That's where the little gable addition is going, and everything towards me on the property is that bigger, bigger part of the house.
In the half.
It's the half house. So I mean, it was originally a single.
I, I'm with you on that. And, and did you say you considered Franklin Street to be the front of the home?
It is. It, no, well, we, we never thought of that until we started looking at the zoning. And it's, it's been, it's per the zoning and
Is the front door from Mill Street?
Of, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
But it, it, it's how somebody looks at it. There's a front.
Okay, I'm looking at pictures of it online and I'm like, I, I'm
It, it's based on, I, every town is different, but if reported based on the length of
Makes sense, right? So your, what your building then is really not, no, no one's gonna see it. It doesn't affect the other side of the house. People behind you, it's quite a distance. People across the street, it's quite a distance. Um, and you're building on your own piece of land there. You just have I understand now.
Hi there. Just wanna say, the person before you, they didn't wanna, they withdrew. So we're ahead of our schedule. So you've missed, you've missed the opportunity for public comment. So I just wondered if you wanted to say anything about this, you don't have to, homeowners often do. If there was something you wanted to say about
People that are right next to me came over and said, oh, you know, they got to look at my kitchen plan. They just was wondering what it's about.
All right. Well, thank you. So we're in the midst of questioning now. One of our members has already asked questions from the presenter and now now it's, uh, the turn for somebody else. If else would like to go next.
I'll go. From the drawings, it looked like the main part of the house is about seven ninety square feet, two stories, maybe three stories. Do you know the total square footage of the existing houses?
Yeah.
Well, seven ninety times two would be sixteen hundred, okay, fifteen eighty. So that might be what it is.
We're adding one sixty-five.
One sixty-five, but I see there's a comment, one sixty-five without opening, one seventy-three. Is it because you're going into the existing house or you're subtracting what the existing house had for going? If you blow up one slide in. It's the one below that.
Overhang, what is, was over which is in Compton.
It's the one with the major, yeah, it's that, it's a blow up, yeah. See that? It says one seventy one seventy-two, and then it says one sixty-five.
One sixty-five is the footprint.
Oh, of the new
Of the edge.
Okay.
And I probably should delete the rest of that. No, because it's not for you. Yeah. I don't believe in it.
So it's one sixty-five on a house that's sixteen hundred square feet already. Okay, it's quite small.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I'm sure it'll do what you want it to do. Sometimes we look at scaling and mass. It was two stories. It would be big. You see the street and all the neighbors, but that's that's quite plain and small. No other question?
All right, uh, anybody else?
Yes.
Uh, Kayla, can you go to slide number? So in the little, the crook of the the main house and the L, that's where the addition is gonna go up.
Right.
And that faces out to Franklin Street. And that's where you pick up the, or, or you have the change in the secondary setback from thirty to twenty-five because that building's coming up. The new building would be like extruded out towards us.
Yeah. So the front, the primary front yard of it, yes.
Yeah.
And that, that you see from Mill Street.
Okay. Okay, and then the materials are just gonna, you're gonna carry along with the existing materials, the same kind of windows and whatever. All right, I have no more questions.
Mr. Bennet online, do you have any questions for for our presenter?
I have no questions.
Okay, and I too don't really have any questions that haven't, haven't already been asked by my colleagues. So now we go to deliberations where each person talks about what are the criteria for a special permit in this case, or whether this meets the criteria, whether they can support this application. Who would like to begin? Mr. Delai.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So here we have, uh, no new nonconformities per, uh, per the materials. I guess we, we're kind of close on the, um, what was it? The, uh, lot coverage? Lot, could, would you mind bringing up the maintenance? Yeah, so we're close on that. We're close on the lot coverage, but, but we're not there. So we're good with no new nonconformity. And then is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is existing? I think the answer to that is no. We, we've kind of talked a lot about how this is situated on the lot and how it will be situated in between the L and the existing or the, uh, the historic main, main part of the structure. So I think, in my opinion, th- this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think I can support.
I'll go next. Yeah, I have to agree with no conformity and it won't be more detrimental. I think it's a it's a nice little addition. It should hopefully serve, serve the O as well. Support the application.
Mr. Janta?
I support the application.
Mr. Bennet?
Uh, I agree with my colleagues and support the application.
Uh, and I, uh, on a personal note, I was moving in over my team is excellent. And I love this house. It's a lovely house. It's really, it's really pretty, and it, it's very unusual to have a big, big, I used to think it was a side, I guess I learned tonight. But it's very unusual in the South Penn to have that big piece of raised base. Uh, I did, you know, my wife and I did think the kitchen was a little cramped, but I see you're taking care of it. So anyway, I can all, you know, I, I just love all of that. And I, I can all, I can enthusiastically support, so.
Yeah. Think they, what we do.
Yeah, so it is unanimous. It's approved. I have to do. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you actually have?
Technically, we need to vote.
It looks like it'll be a true
It looks like. It's, it's got a good chance.
Someone's gonna change their mind last
Somebody could. So would somebody like to make a formal motion?
Oh my gosh.
Sure, thank you. I can carry that.
I'll make the motion to approve fifty-one Mill Street, ZNC twenty-four dash thirty-five.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Around the table. Mr. Delai.
Yes.
Mr. Shagun?
Yes.
Mr. Janta?
Yeah.
And Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Now it is unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our hearings for this evening. The next item on the agenda is our minutes, right? I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce you two. I'm not used to doing. Anyway, I think you've all seen the minutes. They were short. It was a short meeting. Does anybody have any suggested changes for this?
Good night.
Good night now.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Of whatever meeting.
So who?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor? Are unanimously approved? Is there any other business that, uh, the planning office or the vice chair, I don't have any. Do you have any?
No, but Andy is online. Perhaps he does.
Andy, uh, do you have anything you'd like to bring up with us?
Uh, no, I think the only thing, um, we have some zoning changes that are in process. I think you know about the MBTA communities, sort of generically, you don't typically see that as a board. Um, the accessory dwelling units though, uh, the city council took a first vote on that zoning amendment. Uh, then a second vote is expected to be taken in a couple of weeks. Uh, so we will, uh, give you an updated copy of that section of the zoning ordinance, uh, that we're expecting to be finally on the books. Um, there's a new set of state statutory regulations, which I can, uh, review with you at the next meeting with that ordinance. Uh, but in essence, um, where in single-family districts and single-family, uh, uh, properties where folks have these accessory dwelling units they might be interested in doing, there are certain parameters set out for that, and it basically replaces the in-law ordinance section that we have right now. The only other things I would mention is that we are bringing forward a update to the signage regulations. Um, so, uh, happy to touch base with you about that as well. I know you don't frequently see those. You typically see more likely the, the things that you see tonight. Um, things of that nature, but, um, but we'll update you on, um, a few tweaks that we're looking to just mainly housekeeping um, and clarification of some things, including in the general ordinance, um, some of the city properties, how those are handled. But, um, um, there will be other zoning changes of, of so forth, but I don't think there's anything else I would note right now unless you have any questions.
Actually, so you say the, the in-law permits is going away, replaced by this now?
Correct, and that's to be consistent with the statute. Um, I'm happy to unpack that further, uh, depending on how much detail you want. Um, but in essence, the state, uh, has, um, the state legislature has adopted a new piece of legislation that requires mandates local communities allow, uh, accessory dwelling units under certain parameters. Um, and this goes into effect on, uh, February second. It, it overrides any inconsistent local regulations. And so the, we've been working with the city council to adopt new regulations that would be, uh, enforceable under the new regulations and, um, consistent with the statute. So they're not, um, nothing in there is sort of struck, if you will. Um, so that's in essence what's happening.
I think when we get our first, uh, accessory dwelling unit thing, it'd be good maybe before that for somebody to describe what this thing is. Or at least send us, send us the bio or send us the ordinance.
Yeah, I think we'll, uh, defer to you. I think what would make most sense is, uh, send you a copy of the ordinance, just a PDF of the language to review. Um, it'll be posted to the MuniCode page for, you know, for a bit of a delay. Um, but you'll be able to read that. And then what I could do is just, um, skim through, scroll through the document um, at your next meeting and just kind of review, um, what each section's doing briefly. And then if you have any questions, we can go from there.
I think that'd be good. Also, before the meeting, a little bit of a discussion broke out about fortyBs or whether we would be seeing a friendly fortyB regarding the K-Mart site. Did you comment upon in what month that thing might appear?
Hard to say exactly. Um, at this point in time, I would estimate maybe March that we might be seeing that. It's hard to say. Um, because we're not in direct control of that application coming in. Um, but in hearing from the development team or the property and development team, um, in terms of their process to go forward with the friendly fortyB uh, process, they have some other things they have to do first before they can come to the DBA. So I would estimate maybe March timeframe, um, that we would see that, but uh, certainly give you an update if we have anything more, more info in the coming days.
I mean, I think that one's a pretty big deal. Unfortunately, Bud has been through some of these with challenges for quite frankly, a lot of them. I had no idea the kind of background. I know Rob may have seen one. It is twenty-two years of board here, but probably not to the degree Bud has, but I do think
Yeah, I think he had the Woodman Way one, if I'm not mistaken. He was, uh, on the board when that one happened. Um, yeah, that's, it's great to have that experience there. I definitely, uh, I agree with your statement. It's a, it's a big one, a big project, so to speak, and a big discussion. Um, and I imagine it's up to you, but we could probably work with you and the, um, and Rob to figure out, do we want to designate a night for that or, you know, have a uh, and that sort of thing, but, um, as opposed to other applications that night, but defer to you.
I, I, I think on that one, it'd be very helpful if the meeting before gives here. You gave us some some information as to what our role is, you know. I mean, some people think it's just, we, we, we can't do anything. Other people said, well, we can delay this forever and throw it in the court. We can all tax it. So it'd be useful to know.
Yeah.
May, maybe you, you're too close to it to tell us.
Uh, no, no, I mean, I'm happy to. It's, it's part of my job to, to run through, uh, these things and to help you with that. And, uh, it's good that there are members who have had, you know, seen some of that, the experiences before in permitting. I don't know whether those are all good or bad. Um, but, uh, this project is very well known, so to speak, in terms of what's going on with it, mainly because there's been a development agreement and there's been discussion at the city council already. Um, I'm sure all of you have some, you know, familiarity with it. Um, so it's, it's relatively an unknown quantity, uh, in the sense that we're seeing it move ahead and will likely come to the ZBA as the same project or plans that we saw previously with maybe some minor tweaks. Um, so I, I, there's nothing that's changed along those lines. The scale of it is much larger, I would say, than we might typically allow in zoning. Um, you know, if we were to adopt zoning, you know, uh, under one, one hundred percent unilateral local control. Um, but because of the lack of safe harbor status, uh, with the ten percent housing in, in our community being less than that number, um, we, um, there's an opening there, so to speak, in the permit process under a state statute, fortyB. And so, um, we decided to work in partnership with the, uh, property owner developer to try to get the best possible outcome for the city. And so there's a couple of other things that were covered as part of that development agreement. Um, including, uh, things like safe harbor status, long-term affordability and rental, uh, uh, benefits where we've lost rentals over the years. Um, but in essence, your job, I just sort of answered your question in simple terms, the job of your board will be to grant, uh, and, and there'll be a list in the application. Grant waivers, essentially the equivalent of variances from any applicable local regulations that, that may need to be waived or reduced uh, in some format in order to, uh, facilitate that particular project, that project, uh, as it is. There's, uh, certainly more to unpack there. There is debate about, um, uh, whether or not, you know, the community's at the ten percent and, you know, and verifying our status and the board's ability to say no versus uh, say yes with the conditions and things like that. But for the most part, you are granting, uh, waivers from the regulations. There is a presumption here under the state statute that affordable housing is a, um, is a priority goal and that trumps, uh, the local regulations if they are, um, problematic in some way, let's say. Um, there are public health and safety issues that can be raised during the permitting process that can be um, a reason for denying a fortyB project. I'm not seeing that those are coming into play here um, in, in any way. I'm happy to have further discussion, but I don't think that that's necessarily the, the issue here. To me, it's more about um, uh, I see the board largely going through the typical process of, uh, enumerating the waivers and reductions, uh, that may be needed under zoning. Uh, or if there's other, uh, regulations local, like the wetlands, wetlands regulations, the conservation commission has, there'll be a local regulation uh, that gets superseded here and, and bulked in with the application to you. But here, there's not really any wetland impacts, uh, that are happening, so we wouldn't see that. Um, so it basically like your normal procedure for granting relief, more like can do a variance. Um, and I, I think we're, at least right now, expecting to see the same plans that you have probably already familiar with.
Yeah, there's anybody else before we close?
Based on what you just discussed, my, my experience has been too, that oftentimes the applicant may not come to us with a fully cooked proposal. As an example, traffic. And that we, we have the right as a board to request traffic. I think that's probably applicable here in Spades, because it dumps out on the low street. Well, I assume things like that, uh, wastewater management's another one. You know, this is a pretty big building that's gonna dump it along the water.
Yes, one hundred percent. Uh, I would definitely recommend and support and agree with your authority to call for a peer review. I think the development team expects that. Um, and then several And in several different areas, we would work at the Department of Public Services on some. Definitely agree with the queuing that happens on Low Street with Story Ave, although Story Ave is Mass D O T's jurisdiction. And so we don't have a lot of ability to modify that. And that, you know, that's largely in their control. There could be some signalization improvements, sort of more minor things that might happen also at the top end of the plaza where it meets with, with Story Ave. But I think, you know, in my mind, I've been contemplating, you know, might it be beneficial to have something like a smaller roundabout at the bottom of where the driveway comes down to Low Street? Because there's a constant queuing issue that's happening and the, the turning movements that will increase with cars coming and going from that. You know, it's, it's already a heavily trafficked area. So I don't know it's going to add a significant demand over what's already happening in the area per se. But certainly because of the turning movements, at least it would seem to, to me, it makes sense possibly to consider something like a roundabout, but that would require some coordination between the development team and the city in terms of right of way and design and so forth. It would be beneficial to have those improvements done here with this project. I know there's a propensity with, in the development projects to sort of say, well, we'll deal with that later on. That's, this is only the first building. There'll be future things. It would be beneficial to try to get that addressed now as part of this project in some way, whatever that improvement is, if there's any improvements for both pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles, because there is no signalized control at the bottom of that intersection right now.
I, I mean, yeah, I guess in, in my experience, it's probably five or six avenues where a peer review might be the play. I guess before we even open the hearing, it might be smart of us to at least discuss, you know, what we might do. You know, one of the ones we ended up doing in our time was actually the fire department to come in and do a review. That could they get their ladder to turn around one end of the building? I know a lot of times the design has that in it. I guess there's some type of doll, you know, configuration they do where they run a truck around on a computer and make sure they can turn around to fight the fires.
Yeah. Most definitely. I think we would have the, both a civil engineering review, stormwater design review and things like that, truck turning movement template provided to the fire department. And also probably some one-on-one meetings, you know, with, with a few to city departments during the process to give you all that feedback from city agencies, whether it be water capacity, sewer capacity, infrastructure that might be, need to be upgraded in any way, where, where utilities tie in with the street. So we can be very specific about what, what upgrades the development is, is, you know, placing another demand, let's say, there, and they therefore need to mitigate that. So I definitely agree with having that peer review and the fire department access hydrant locations, things like that would all be as part of that as well.
Yeah. I think you made a very point. I mean, I think we should maybe in February, before this thing gets here, have a discussion. Maybe you would lead the discussion.
The kind of avenues we might, might find ourselves having to run down. We, we request a period. A lot of times.
Yeah. If you know, we can just add that as a discussion item at the end of your agenda. And we can, you know, similar to the A D U ordinance, maybe after we recap what's going on there, we can just switch to this subject and then run through any particular questions, concerns folks have. We can line up so that, you know, for instance, we're able to mobilize the capier review as soon as something's coming in, you know, and so forth.
A lot more concerned about this one than the, than the A D U.
Yeah. Understandable. Yeah. Understandable. It's a much larger project than your board usually sees typically, so.
You know, this is a very big project. I can imagine quite a bit of, of other concern or regret about a bunch of different things. Okay. Well, I guess there's nothing else on that. I think we're ready to adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay. So we want to move to adjourn?
Yeah. It's been moved by second.